Ready.
Okay, good evening and welcome to the Select Board meeting for Monday, February 26th, 2024. Time is 6 o'clock. We're here in the Select Board Conference Room at Town Hall. This meeting is being held in hybrid fashion, both in person and on Zoom, pursuant to Mass General Law, and the meeting is going to be recorded. If anyone else is going to record anything during the meeting, I usually tell you to let Jason know, but he's not here, so just make it known to the Chair. Anyone?
I have to record it for my internship, so.
You are more than welcome to do so, sir.
Thank you.
So that's Lucas, Karen.
148 Hillside Road.
Okay, great. I was gonna go with Lucas, but that's good now that we got our. Okay, I'm gonna go a little out of turn, and I'd like to read a statement. "I believe it be wrong of us as the Select Board to not recognize and condemn the events that occurred in Southwick on February the 8th. While those who have a responsibility to conduct a fair and thorough investigation into these events, including the Southwick Police Department, the Handen County District Attorney's Office, and the Southwick, Tallinn, Granville Regional School District, perform their respective duties, it should go without saying that this type of behavior is not acceptable in a modern society." Period. "I strongly condemn the racist incident that occurred in our community. Racism has no place in Southwick, or anywhere for that matter, and such behavior is completely unacceptable. We stand in solidarity with those affected and are committed to fostering a safe and inclusive environment for all of our students, staff, and community members. From all of our homes to our hearts, we must treat everyone with respect and dignity, for that is the basis for a peaceful and democratic society. I was going to remark that there is nothing for me to say, but for us to say nothing would be a dereliction of our responsibilities as leaders in this community. There is simply no reason or excuse to treat any other human being in this manner, ever. Therefore, I would like to ask for a motion from the Select Board condemning the actions on February 8, and further, that no one in our town shall be subject to this type of persecution, ever." Would anyone like to make that motion?
I'll make the motion. Sorry, Jason.
I'll second the motion.
We'll conduct a roll call vote. Doug Moglen, definitely.
Jason Perron.
Thank you.
Twice.
And I also know it's highly irregular, but at this time, I'm going to allow anyone in the room and on Zoom who wishes to do so to stand, state their name as a signatory to this motion and vote of the Southwick Select Board to show solidarity on this issue. Is there anyone in the room that would like to sign on to that motion? Please.
Lucas, Karen.
Very well. Anyone else?
12 Third Street.
Anyone else? Sir.
Roger Citaldo, 413.
Thank you, Mr. Citaldo.
Inga Hoteling, 45 Klein Road.
Thank you.
Thomas Hibbert, the Director.
Thank you, Mr. Hibbert. Anyone on. Oh, I'm sorry, Nadine. I apologize. Anyone on Zoom? Joanne has her hand raised.
Joanne LeBlanc, 38 Reservoir Road.
Carl Steinhardt, 295 North Loomis, Chief Administrative Officer. Fully concur with the intent of the Chairman and the Board's statement on this matter.
Lisa Anderson, 28 Davis Road.
Anyone else?
Dick Grannells, 148 Berkshire Avenue.
Thank you, Mr. Grannells. And Jason?
Angelina Simone and Jason Jagir, 10 Cedar Street, Southwick.
Thank you very much. Okay, at this time, if you could please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. Mr. Karen, would you please lead us in the pledge, sir?
Absolutely. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well done. Thank you. Okay, now we roll right into public comments. If anyone has any comments that they'd like to address the Select Board that are not being covered under our agenda this evening, now's your opportunity. Is there anyone in the audience that has anything to address under public comments this evening? Young lady.
Inga Hoteling, 45 Klein Road. I'm speaking in behalf of myself as the Chair of the Economic Development Commission. We do have an open seat available, and I do have an applicant who is interested in applying. So my question is, where do we go from here?
Okay, thank you. We'll come back to that under Old Business, because I need to jot some notes for my son. Anyone else in the room? Anyone on Zoom? Joanne has her hand raised. I don't think it's from before. So Joanne?
Hi, Joanne LeBlanc, 38 Reservoir Road. Recently, I wanted to get ahold of one of the Board members by email, and I looked on the town's website and noticed that I didn't see any emails for anybody. So, long story short, is it possible to have everybody's email address put on the town website? You know, when you go onto Members on the Committee or the Board or whatever, to make it a lot easier and to communicate with that person?
Okay, thank you. I will look into that. It seems like a reasonable request. Pro tip: It can be first initial, last name, at southwickma.gov. That works 90% of the time.
Okay, great, but most people wouldn't know that. They just would like to click on a name and.
Correct, and we'll look at that, but just for your edification, if you need to get me, it's D. Gale, G.A.L.E.
Mine would be D. Moglen. And southwickma.gov.
Anyone else on Zoom that has a public comment? All right. 6:05 PM. We're only running three minutes late. Liquor license update from Westfield River Brewing Company, Sergio Bonavita. Sergio, are you, you're not here. Are you on Zoom? We'll assume he's running late. And we'll come back to him when he arrives. 6:10 PM. Board of Health update and approval of the intermunicipal agreement regional grant. Anyone want to speak to that?
Sure.
Funny? Our health director's here. Come on up, Mr. Director. No, please.
Hello, everyone.
How are you?
Not bad. So, one, I just wanted to come, I was talking to Doug a few weeks ago, and he suggested just coming to say hi. I've been here actually over a year now. Things have been going really good. And so I'll do a couple updates, and then we also have an intermunicipal agreement for our regional grant. I believe the Select Board reviewed a draft of this that has barely changed, but it might have been before last May, so it could have been the previous Select Board. So now that we're getting ready to sign it with all six towns, I just wanted to put it in front of you guys one more time. So, the intermunicipal agreement is for our, it's called the Public Health Excellence Grant through DPH. We are partnered with five other towns with Granville, Tallinn, Blandford, Montgomery, and Russell. And this is to increase any public health services. So our, kind of our initial focus was public health nursing, because all of our towns had, you know, a part-time nurse, if that. And then there's, especially with the pandemic, but there's also a lot of online disease track, any reportable illnesses that the nurses do, and that was kind of a shortfall for all the towns. So we now have, through this grant, this was all created during the pandemic, so the state gave out the money before the IMA. I think in a normal scenario, it would have gone differently, but we're like a year and a half into the grant. So we have two nurses, a full-time nurse and a part-time nurse, Tricia Settelo and Mary Ann Demming. Tricia, they each cover three different towns. So Tricia is the nurse that covers Southwick. So you might have seen some emails from her. And they've been doing a lot of, you know, resident public health education. I think most recently, they did a, how to talk on Alzheimer's. They've been working with nursing students in the Senior Center, doing presentations for the seniors. And we just got approved to get what's called Stop the Bleed, and Tricia is a trainer for Stop the Bleed, so that is hopefully something we'll never need to use, but it's akin to like an AED. And it's a kit that has, I meant to bring one down. We just got them delivered last week. But it's a kit that has like a tourniquet and quick clot, so if there was ever an incident in the building, that it's kind of in a central place, you could grab it and try and stop the bleed before the ambulance gets there to try and keep people keep people alive until they can get the help they need. So so we got six of those kits, one for each Town Hall, and we were able to get that covered through our grant. So I think in the next couple of weeks, I think we're gonna be getting that hung up next to the AED, and Tricia's gonna be doing training for the employees, so they know how to use it if ever it should be needed.
Not to go off the field of that, I believe Sergeant Westcott is also a certified trainer in that as well. And he also has gone into the community and offered that training at certain businesses in town as well.
Great. Another thing we've done, we've got inspection software that we're just kind of getting online, so I'll be able to use that for housing and restaurant inspections on a tablet. And then the other big thing is we've just made our grant coordinator position that we've been trying to fill for two months, three months, forever. We just made that full-time, so hopefully we'll have a little better luck getting that filled, but that position is specific to this grant, but I've been having to put a lot of time and energy into this grant. And once this position is filled, I will be able to turn over a lot of those responsibilities and focus more back on Southwick. So I'm very much looking forward to that. And, yeah, it's kind of a lot of the big stuff we've been working on lately. And then all our routine inspections and licensing and all that, but so, yeah, that's where we're at. And then, so this IMA is what will make, it's required by the grant, and it will make our, we have a regional advisory board, which is one representative from each town that kind of governs what the grant does. So this agreement will make that officially a public body, and then we will, we've kind of been in like a gray area as far as operations, so then we will be subject to all the same rules as any other board. So we posted agendas and all of that, so.
Tom has had this looked at by Ben Coyle, as well as the General Counsel for the Mass Association of Health Boards.
Yep. The Mass Association Health, but they pretty much wrote it and filled in all our information for us, so they made it made it very easy for us, which was nice.
Okay.
So everything within this has changed.
The only thing that's been added, I think since the Select Board previously approved it, was the very last page, the Exhibit B,
Yeah.
which is just kind of, we wrote out what shared services we've been doing. But other than that, nothing has, nothing has changed. So I think, I think technically, probably be good to get a vote on it, and then I will need to do a couple last-minute edits, remove the watermark, and put the proper dates in and all that, but I will get it. If you guys are good with it, then I will get it prepared for, for Doug to sign. Then we have to go around to all, all six Boards of Health and Select Boards to sign it, so.
Who was the signer on the previous document, the original?
There is no original.
Didn't we execute?
There was, there was a contract with, with the state that we renew every year.
But this is the intermunicipal among.
Yeah, this is the first intermunicipal agreement.
This is the, this is the finalized one of that earlier authorized edited stuff, Doug.
Yeah.
Thank you. Jason, any questions?
No, I'm familiar as from last year with a portion that, you know, this is the new intermunicipal agreement, as Tom said, but I am familiar with what we did last year, so I'm good as long as, on my end.
No questions for me.
So entertain a motion for the Chair to sign when a properly-formatted document is put in front of us that's the same as this one without the watermarks.
I'll make that motion.
I'm giving him airtime.
I know, you got to. I was giving the pause to just to make sure we didn't jump on top of each other.
I was second that motion.
It's a roll call vote, please. Doug Moglen, aye. Jason Perron, aye.
Dan Gale, aye.
There you go.
Thank you very much.
We'll leave it on the counter, and we'll get it signed for you.
All right, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Keep up the good work, my friend.
Appreciate it.
Okay. I didn't see Sergio come in. Okay. Acknowledged payables warrant number 2420B dated February the 20th in the amount of $513,027.83. Open session minutes from 2:13. Discussion or motion?
I did review them. I did have Lisa correct the dates on Page 3, 20, on 141 Congamon Road. It was 24 through 26. So she's changed her copy. We can accept it with that change if you like.
Okay.
I will make the motion to accept the Select Board open session meeting minutes from the 13th with that one modification.
Second.
Doug Moglen, aye.
Jason Perron, aye.
Dan Gale, aye.
And we'll table the exact section till our next meeting, since we're not all here.
Correct. Thank you, sir.
Okay. No problem, sir. Okay. Next. We have a hawkers and peddlers permit for the Fox Brothers, Inc. of 636 College Highway to sell plants and flowers on March 29, 30th, and 31st, May 10th, 11th, and 12th of 2024 at the mobile station. Would anyone like to make that motion to grant that permit?
I will make that motion.
Second.
Doug Moglen, aye.
Jason Perron, aye.
Dan Gale, aye.
Next, we have a one-day liquor license for the Rotary Club of Southwick for their summer concert series on July 10th, 17th, 24th, 31st, August 7th, August 14th, August 21st, August 28th of this year, and I am going to have to invoke the rule of necessity, because technically, the Select Board are corporate members of Rotary. So in the air of caution, we shall invoke that. This is fairly customary. They've done this for four or five years now. Very successful fundraiser for the Rotary, very well attended by folks from town, and generally, people are extremely well behaved. So I'd entertain a motion to grant those successive one-day liquor licenses, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, eight of them.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Okay, and just for, before we go to a vote, it is from 6:00 to 9:00 PM, and with live entertainment, obviously, it's their summer concerts. There will be live bands. So now we'll go to a vote. Doug Moglen, aye.
Jason Perron, aye.
Dan Gale, aye.
Thank you. Hey, Abby Finance, approve the deposit of $53.50 in cash donations into the library gift account. May I have a motion, please?
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Doug Moglen, aye.
Jason Perron, aye.
Dan Gale, aye.
I think it was later on in the thing.
But not on the agenda.
It was in the file. I'll get, I think it'll come up, right? All right, well, let's get this one out of the way. So here's another $50 deposit donation from John Henderson into the library's gift account. Need a motion, please?
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Doug Moglen, aye.
Jason Perron, aye.
Dan Gale, aye.
Thank you. Okay. And these, I believe, are, I'll make sure, these are motions for the Chair, right? The motion to approve Pioneer Valley Planning Commission invoice number 28 for fiscal year 20 for services from October 2023 to December 2023. This is, invoice number 28. This is the Southwick Community Assistance Program highlights for October. This is for the North Lake Ave project in the amount of $2,733.06.
I'll make the motion to approve that invoice.
Second.
Doug Moglen, aye.
Jason Perron, aye.
Dan Gale, aye.
Okay. Pioneer Valley Planning Commission invoice number 29 for fiscal year 20 for services from October to December of 2023. This is also on North Lake. And for North Lake Housing Rehab and the Community Food Paints deal, and it's in the amount of $894.43. May I have a motion, please?
You have that motion, sir?
Second.
Doug Moglen, aye.
Jason Perron, aye.
Dan Gale, aye.
Lastly, invoice number 30. Same thing. This is also in the, in the amount of $208.30.
I'll make the motion to approve that.
Second.
Doug Moglen, aye.
Jason Perron, aye.
Dan Gale, aye.
Now's your chance, kid. You need to set up or anything, or set up the lights and the cameras and everything, or?
I gotta do my makeup.
There you go. So it says to request approval of a social media account for the Conservation Commission for public outreach.
Yes, so I don't know if you have the proposal I sent last week. However, the essential thing is when I started researching internships, I wasn't, yeah, that's, thank you. I wasn't totally sure what the Conservation Commission was until I actually went about looking into it. So I was thinking about ways that we could let the public know more about what they do. So, and I think the most easy way to do that is by starting with social media. So I was thinking we do a Facebook account, since most citizens of the town have Facebook. It's the most easily accessible for all. And we would just post about things like what the Wetlands Protection Act is, for instance, because it seems kind of complex, but it's really simple to understand once we go out and, you know, do the outreach, explain it to people, as well as, for instance, like invasive species, like the hydrilla that was recently discovered in Middle Pond, and what we're doing to combat it and research how to combat it, as well as basic stuff like informing about meetings and agendas, how you can get involved with the Conservation Commission. So I think there's a lot of opportunities for educating the public with this, and I think that would make our connection to the town as a whole a lot more apparent.
And your name again, sir?
Lucas Karen.
There you go. I think it's an excellent idea.
Thank you.
We strongly encourage output to the community on what's going on in these halls. I think Facebook is a good avenue for it. Word of caution, though, it's a one-way communication.
Yeah. Yeah, so no reaching out to like, yeah.
You reach out, comments coming back in are turned off.
Okay.
That's what we've done on other Facebook accounts that have been approved.
All right.
Just so you don't get into any banter about.
That's, that's understandable. And we, and.
Not to your purpose.
I'm sorry. Jason?
Good. Lucas explained himself very, very well.
Thank you.
So the, and you did, you did a great job. Just, we do have a social media policy, which will make sure you get a copy of. It's a town's social media policy. And then there are certain other, just minor housekeeping things that need to be done with any account that's set up in the town's name, i.e. a town employee, not an elected or appointed, has to have the passwords or whatever, because people change, people come and go from boards and commissions, and the ability to have the access to that account should that person leave or what have you, right? So just follow that. It's in the policy, I believe. And for any questions, you can reach out through the Select Board's office. I believe it's mostly Jim that takes care of these things, but wish you well. Do a great job of it.
I know you will. I have a singular question. Do I need to come to you every time I want to post something, or can I just kind of? Okay.
I would assume you would put it by your own chair for approval, and then and that's it.
All righty. Just wanted to make sure, so I don't end up breaking stuff.
And, and just use common sense, right? Use common sense. It should, like you said, I think what you're aiming to do is admirable, right? And if there, if the posts are about this, that, or the other, under the Wetlands Protection Act, or what is hydrilla, or what is an invasive, to use what the examples you gave, fantastic. Don't editorialize. It should be factual, presentation of data, and.
Lacking opinion.
All right.
And if you feel that there's a question about it, ask your Chair.
All righty.
Okay.
Works for me.
Good.
Keep up the good work.
Thank you.
Thank you for volunteering to help the Conservation Commission. It's much appreciated.
Yeah, I'm happy.
And all the work that you did on the master project, too.
I'm around.
Yes, you are. What year are you?
I'm a senior.
So you're not gonna be around much longer. What are you looking at for schools?
I'm thinking about like English and environmental science, and I've been looking, I got accepted to Western New England University Scholarship about $30,000 a year. And I'm continuing to apply to other schools. I'm looking at Endicott as well, so I have options open.
Good for you.
Thank you.
Keep up the good work. Anything else? Ms. Poehler? He's doing a good job.
I hope. Awesome. Okay, thank you very much.
You're welcome. Thank you. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Lucas.
The media policy's in hand.
All righty. I'll take a look.
Okay, don't go far. Approve access to Sofinowski Farm for a Springfield Stargazer Club member at night to stargaze with a telescope.
Yeah.
Is this the thing we tried to do the last time, but it was too cloudy, rainy, foggy?
No, this is actually different.
This is part of the thing.
So I was contacted by an Agawam resident who I believe is a part of the Springfield Stargazers Club, because he found out about the Sofinowski property through the Stargazers Club. And basically, he just asked me if he could have permission to go on to the Sofinowski property after dusk nighttime with his telescope to stargaze. This is just him on his own doing his hobby, because in Agawam, they're flooded with light pollution, and he doesn't have that opportunity.
Huh. What's to stop someone from going on the Sofinowski property at night without a telescope?
Technically, they're not supposed to be there after sunset. We have, we do have posted rules on the property, and it's from sunrise to sunset. I believe that's on the Sofinowski property and at the Granville Gorge, and I do believe at North Pond. So those are posted.
It was a leading question. I kind of knew the answer, but I was just, I just was trying to figure out how we, it seems like an easy, good idea, provided the guy doesn't sue us if he trips and falls and hurts himself at night on the Sofinowski property.
I would think that he's good at walking in the dark with a telescope.
I think Sabrina can secure release from anybody who's authorized by her.
I was gonna say waiver might be a good idea.
I think it would be a great idea.
Yeah, is there any sort of, I don't know, one that's already created that I could just take, or is this something that I'm gonna have to?
Yeah, we can find them. We'll find.
We'll find one for you. But is there any opposition from this board?
Yeah.
Yes, there's opposition from the board to allow it? Okay, that's why I wanted to.
I feel like, how are you going to tell the next person no if they just want to go out there and hike at night, or what are you gonna do if you find beer bottles out there? What are you gonna say, did it? What if they start taking their cars past the parking area? Or bikes or whatever out there at night, and how do you know which person you allowed or didn't allow? And what if someone gets hurt and nobody knows they're out there? Who's gonna find them? How are you gonna find them? I see a lot of bad there. I think you're opening, you have dust.
I think you're opening, you, you have dusted on for a reason.
Well, I think if you're doing it as a, one at a time authorization, and that board is okaying it with a release.
As an organized event, it's different.
Right, so. Other people, if other people are out there and they don't have authorization, that's a different issue.
And I don't know how you know they're.
Does he have a buddy?
Um, I'm sure he has plenty of buddies. Um.
I was saying, to mitigate that would be kind of a check-in or check-out with an email or something to somebody to say, hey, uh, if we came in, we left.
Right.
Or, I, I don't know.
One of the things that I had mentioned when I was on the phone with him was, um, you know, obviously, I can't give that permission myself, and that it would run this by the Conservation Commission. They would probably want you to contact the police department like the night you go, so they know that you're there. And they expect a car to be there. So, and if they don't.
I will say this, this is, as Doug would say, sort of something that goes in my wheelhouse. Um, on my other side of the government. Uh, so these are things that you do run into, Diane. But, um, you, the, the recommendations that were given were the, generally what we use across the border in my full-time position. Um, notification that you're gonna be out there, uh, vehicle type, plate number, um, hour, expected hours, and contact information for an emergency contact.
Hours. Of a car.
And that would, that would be something I would suggest that if we're going to go this route and, and allow this on a case-by-case basis, that should be posted on the signs as well, that, that's something you need to do. As well as on your Conservation Commission, um, pages that state, you know, something along the lines for people that want to come out there and do these types of things. Cause myself, when I first heard about this, it's, you know, as Mr. Mogul said, I knew based on where we are and what we do, that yes, you need permission. Um, but a lot of people, I've, I've heard this numerous thou, uh, maybe not thousands, but hundreds of times within my career where people, well, I didn't know. So you need to make sure it's, it's glaringly apparent, as much as we can, that it's apparent that these are rules that are put in place.
When you post it on the signs, and then the next person wants to go camping out there, and they just give you their plate number, their emergency contact information, you gonna let them go camping out there?
I mean, I think camping is a little bit different, um, as far as like the years and.
delineation to spell out that, I think.
I, I, I think Jason's not far off. I understand Diane's concern. I believe, that's why I asked. There was a motion afoot at one point to do a stargazing event on the same property.
Yeah.
It was, they were, they were gonna have people for parking and flashlight. So that, but it, something happened, it didn't happen, right?
There it is.
If, if, I think the weather prevented the view of the sky.
Yes.
So why wouldn't this be something similar, but on a smaller scale? That's why I'm asking if the guy's got a buddy. I, I, I think it would be a little bit dangerous to do this at night with one person. Um, but to have two and, and have a, a smaller event with a waiver? And then I think that might mitigate, I, I don't know, I can't speak for this scale, but that might mitigate some of the concern. And I, and I understand, not meant for camping, and I understand what the guy's trying to do.
I do, too. You're gonna open the gate for other people wanting to go on other properties, not just this one, but other properties outside of the rules and the, and the times.
Mm-hmm. Well, we had, uh, there was an event for, at North Pond where they went, because of the moon was out, something. So they went for a walk at night. There was a, already an event in the pond. And I think this would be something of like a, a, a case-by-case basis. I think it's kind of always been where, you know, people ask to use the property and they're told either yes or no. Um, for, for various reasons. Um, I, I don't see an issue, but that's just me for using it for stargazing. I feel for the guy, the stars, you know, you can't really see anything in Agawam. It's part of our natural heritage to be able to see the stars, and I don't want to take that from him. Um, and, uh, here I am dreaming, I'm thinking like maybe we could have like some type of sticker for them to put on the back of their cars if they want to come and stargaze, like a stargazing pass, right? Um, that's just what I, that's just what I think of ahead of time, like, oh, what if more people want to come and look at the stars? Um, how can we, how can we streamline this? But.
And I don't know how much of an effect it has that this is also a residential neighborhood, too, that I, I don't see this having a, I see this having a de minimis traffic impact on, uh, you know, more divining road, but.
Right.
Um, you know, most people that live along there probably do not expect the, the headlights from that parking lot at night, because it's supposed to close at dusk. But, um, I don't know, where do we take this from here?
Um, I made my case. We can vote to approve or not, and it'll be two to one.
Well, I'd rather get to a consensus on this, and it is the contribution.
I just think it's.
I hear you. I, I, I don't disagree with you. I just, I don't want to, you know, I don't want to force a vote. That's, that's.
You know, I don't think everybody's gonna come to you and say, I'm going in too. Or, or to whoever they're gonna have to report to.
I know not everybody's gonna come to us, so.
They don't now. I mean, they're at Fort Fun on the weekends and in the evenings, and that's kind of why I would say I, 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 uh,
but I, the liability aspect, I completely understand. Uh, but, you know, to encourage proper use or, or proper permission of anything, um, would be the way I would approach this. And I agree with Sabrina's take on it being a case-by-case basis. Um, I understand that the lemming effect, that one does it, I'm going to do it as well. But, um, we're a recreational community, as we always say, and I want to, you know, stand by that. And if there becomes a problem, we can end this quickly. So I would actually make a motion to allow this.
On a trial basis.
Now we're getting somewhere for this summer.
I'll.
For what period of time? What period of time, Mr. Peron?
Uh, I would say.
The lunar cycle is.
The summertime, we have much later sunset hour, so I would say, um, most situations, again, drawing from my other professional experience, is usually between a ten and eleven cutoff um, for non-lit properties.
I was kind of thinking like, how long do we want to let this run this year, like, until July?
From the year where the star, where the stars are, what time where the.
April thirty, November one? For this year. From, eh, the guy want to get out there now, or he wants to wait until spring?
Uh, we didn't get to that formative conversation. I was like, all right, I'll ask.
How about April to June, and we'll see what happens? To see how it goes with this. I mean, he's got to sign a waiver. Jason, I don't want to get too far out in front. I'm trying to try to limit it in a little bit.
I, I, you know, I'm a, you know, I'm, we're, this is what we're working on this for, so yeah, absolutely. I'm fine with that.
So April to June, and you said he has to sign a waiver?
Wait, wait, wait. I am but one member on this board.
April first?
Yeah, to June thirtieth.
Three months to see if he's even got opportunities. He may not even have opportunities in that window.
If it rains, maybe to June, I'm gonna be very upset.
I know, where the stars are visible. We don't control that.
Well, some of them are visible, right? At least a few.
So, yeah, trial basis, sure.
Um, and we talked about, I heard Serena mention the pass. I would suggest that if someone checks in and is doing it, that we do give them some sort of pass with a number on it. And then as that pass is used, that name goes with it, and it doesn't go anywhere else. Just a simple paper pass with maybe our town seal per Conservation Commission, that they can put on their dash. That way you don't have the concerned neighbors that are like, well, what's this out here doing? You know, they're not gonna know.
Hmm. And I can let the two, or the three neighbors know. So somebody has to give her some kind of waiver.
Yeah, and, and we'll get her the waiver.
Which, of course, will say no motor vehicles, no alcohol, no fires.
No telescopes. Just kidding.
Just to reinforce.
That's right. No, I get it. But are you okay with that as a trial to see how this kind of goes?
Yep.
See how we get to consensus here on this board?
Isn't it nice?
Amazing. Amazing. So Jason has a motion on the floor. Would you like to second that motion?
We added to it, but sure, yes.
Or kind of how we read it?
Yep.
We, we're being a little informal.
Yep.
Motion's made and seconded. Doug Mogul, aye?
Jason Peron, aye.
Van Gale, aye. Yeah.
So we managed to go, turn this into government right in front of you, right? Now you gotta write a procedure and get stickers, and this was all great. It was all funny. I think it was so easy.
Ooh, I mean.
Yeah, well, you know. Yeah, we'll go wait for Lucas to leave, then we'll turn it down. Yeah. Uh, I, good catch. Uh, we said good luck to you, but we probably should vote. So, um, I need a motion to approve a social media account for the Southwood Conservation Commission for Public Outreach, subject to the town's social media policy. And as I say, yada, yada. Anyone want to make that motion?
I will make that motion.
Second.
Roll call vote. Doug Mogul, aye?
Jason Peron, aye.
Van Gale, aye.
Now it's official.
There you go.
All right.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next. Approve contract amendment, agreement number one between Robert D. Landis and the Town of Southwood. Need a motion? Uh, need a motion to approve.
Everybody is good with this, as we've seen it?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Then I will make the motion to approve that contract to Mr. Landis.
Second.
Doug Mogul, aye?
Jason Peron, aye.
Van Gale, aye.
Okay, given what we did that, I'd entertain a motion to approve and appoint Robert D. Landis as acting town administrator slash C A O from March thirtieth of twenty twenty-four through six-thirty, twenty twenty-four, subject to the agreement we just executed.
I will make that motion.
Second.
Doug Mogul, aye?
Jason Peron, aye.
Diane Gale, aye.
Carl, it's getting really real.
Yeah, yes, it is, sir, but, you know, we knew it was coming.
Yes, yes, we did.
And we still know where you live.
And, and, yes, yes, we do.
Appreciate, appreciate that, Jason. I very much will, you know, take that into consideration.
Have shoulder issues, so you know.
He's tapping and changing his phone number as we speak.
When he started taking things off.
Yeah, I know. We saw his office tonight. Okay. Um.
Love ya.
Uh, I have a letter here from Police Chief Robert Landis. Notice of Retirement. Dear Board Members, please see the attached intent to retire provided by Sergeant Paul Miles. Anticipated Honor About June sixth, the fifth, not the seventh. Sergeant Miles has dedicated the last twenty-nine years to the department and community with an exemplary level of professionalism in every possible way. He will be greatly missed. Sergeant Miles has requested to stay on as a part-time officer and no doubt would remain an asset in that capacity.
So that other request will have to come from the chief as a secondary.
I was just gonna ask that, Carl. So we just acknowledge his retirement, because we can't block it as much as we'd like to.
Exactly.
So, uh, we're acknowledging the retirement of Sergeant Paul Miles. See, where's the other donation, Diane? Knew it was in there. And authorize the chair to sign the allocation grant from the Mass Cultural Council for eighty-five hundred. Uh, and just to be clear, uh, that would be to ratify the thing that I already docu-signed earlier today or yesterday, because it was time-sensitive. So I need a motion to ratify.
Make that motion.
Thank you.
Second.
Doug Mogul, aye?
Jason Peron, aye.
Van Gale, aye.
Okay. Hear ye, hear ye, press release to all boards, committees, commissions, and citizens. Town of Southwick Select Board, February twenty-sixth. Please submit any and all articles for the special and annual town meeting scheduled to be held on Tuesday, the twenty-first of May, to the Select Board's Office for consideration by Friday, March thirty-first. Close of business. The special town meeting addresses items before end of fiscal year twenty-four. The annual town meeting addresses items for fiscal year twenty-five. Also, please submit all warrant article explanations with the articles at the same time. Failure to do so may result in the article being pulled from the warrant. Thank you. Duly noticed. Okay. No, hmm, hmm, okay. New business. Approve short-term borrowing of general obligation bond anticipation notes for four million five hundred and seventy-nine thousand two hundred and thirteen dollars from March first, twenty twenty-four, and payable to October sixteenth, twenty twenty-four to Fidelity Capital Markets for four percent. Explanation, please, Mr. Steiner.
Sure, this is the, uh, short-term borrowings for different pieces of equipment and projects that are underway, Mr. Chairman. And those items are related to our, um, road authorizations. We've had, um, let's see, several authorizations for road borrowings at town hall, uh, for town meeting, they're near two million. The town hall roof project at two million one hundred nineteen thousand. An ambulance for two hundred seventy-eight thousand, a dump truck for two hundred twenty-two thousand, and another dump truck, uh, uh, bond balance of a short-term borrowing of thirty-one-two. So that, uh, brings into the totality of it, and then, of course, there'll be a bond premium as part of this. So what has to happen is one of the four of us have to read this motion for bond counsel, and we attach it to the minutes of the meeting.
Oh, Mr. Steiner. I believe if I read the first sentence, it says, I, the clerk of the select board.
I agree with that whole thing.
Therefore.
Well, that is true. It, it, the clerk signs it, but that doesn't really say the clerk reads it, but that's up to her. If she must have find, if she doesn't want to.
Don't mess with my schtick. Diane, it's all you.
I, the clerk of the select board, the Town of Southwick Mass certified that a meeting of the board held February twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-four, of which meeting all members of the board were duly notified, and at which a forum was present either in person or on Zoom. That the following votes were unanimously passed, all of which appear on the official record of the board in my custody. It is in my custody. Voted to approve the sale of four million five hundred seventy-nine thousand two hundred and thirteen four percent general obligation bond anticipation notes of the town dated March first, twenty twenty-four, and payable October sixteenth, twenty twenty-four to Fidelity Capital Markets, a division of National Financial Services LLC, at par and accrued interest, if any, plus a premium of twenty thousand nine hundred and twenty-seven dollars. And of course, none of these are ditto. Further noted, that in connection with the marketing and sale of the notes, the preparation and distribution of a notice of sale and a preliminary official statement dated February fifteenth, twenty twenty-four, and a final official statement dated February twenty-second, twenty twenty-four, each in such form as may be approved by the town treasurer, be and hereby are ratified, confirmed, approved, and adopted. Further voted that the town treasurer and select board be and hereby are authorized to execute and deliver a significant events disclosure undertaking in compliance with S E C Rule fifteen C two dash twelve in such form as may be approved by bond counsel to the town, which undertaking shall be incorporated by reference in the notes for the benefit of the holders of the notes from time to time. Further noted that we authorize and direct the town treasurer to establish post-insurance federal tax compliance procedures and continuing disclosure procedures in such forms as the town treasurer and bond counsel deem sufficient. Or if such procedures are currently in place, to review and update said procedures in order to monitor and maintain the tax exempt status of the notes and to comply with relevant securities laws. Further noted, that any certificates or documents related to the notes collectively, the documents may be executed in several counterparts, each of which shall be regarded as an original, and all of which shall constitute one and the same document. Delivery of an exec, executed counterpart of a signature page way document by electronic mail in a P D F file or other electronic transmission shall be as effective as delivery of a manually executed counterpart signature page to such document. And electronic signatures on any of the documents shall be named original signatures for the purposes of the documents and all matters relating their. And electronic signatures on any of the documents shall be named original signatures for the purposes of the documents and all matters relating there too, having the same legal effect as original signatures. Further noted, that each member of the select board, the town clerk, and the town treasurer be and hereby are authorized to take any and all actions and execute and deliver such certificates, receipts, and other documents as may be determined by them or any of them to be necessary or convenient to carry into effect the provisions of the foregoing votes. I hereby certify that the votes were taken at a meeting open to the public, that no vote was taken by secret ballot, that a notice stating, am I reading this, Carl?
Oh, yeah.
Oh, yeah. Keep going, Diane. You're on a roll.
Look at me like I'm going to town.
Well, you're doing great.
That a notice stating a place, date, time, and agenda for the meeting, which agenda included the adoption of the above votes, was filed with the town clerk and a copy thereof posted in a manner conspicuously visible to the public at all hours in or on the municipal building that the office of the town clerk is located at, or if applicable, in accordance with the alternative method, method of notice prescribed or approved by the Attorney General as set forth in nine forty C M R twenty-nine dot oh three two B, at least forty-eight hours, not including Saturdays, Sundays, and legal holidays prior to the time of the meeting and remains so posted at the time of the meeting, that no deliberations or decisions in connection with the sales of notes were taken in executive session, all in accordance with Mass General Law, Chapter thirty A, Sections eighteen through twenty-five as amended. This is dated February twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-four, and signed by the clerk of the select board, Diane Gail.
Would someone like to make a motion for that? Well done, Doug Mogul. Very well done.
Very good.
I will make that motion. Could you just repeat that part between voted and clerk of the select board?
Yeah.
So they have a motion. Would you like to second the motion? Uh, roll call vote. Doug Mogul, aye.
Jason Peron, aye.
Dan Gail, aye.
And then that's for the clerk to sign.
Yep.
Right. So Diane can sign a few of them at the table there.
I'm sure there's probably ninety of them over there, yeah. Okay.
And then there are the, the rest of the other documents are out at the counter. So now that you've voted to authorize yourself to do this, when you're leaving, you need to sign all of the other instruments on your counter.
Fantastic. Okay, we got ten minutes.
He's gonna let you leave.
We got ten minutes to get this all done. Okay. On orders, uh, approve, we did that. Approve L M C application for C P C funds related to dredging of Southboat Ramp Cove to leverage state grants. Good thing they didn't go in front of C P C yet. Dick, how are you?
Good. How are you? Yes, we did.
I know you did.
Yep. And so we went before it's, before C P C, uh, last two, Tuesday, Wednesday, and, uh, they authorized a hundred thousand dollars from the unreserved account to kind of bolster, bolster the grant application, which will be for two hundred ninety-seven thousand even. And that's to dredge the cove adjacent to South Ramp. And you have copies of the, uh, earlier version of the grant application. I keep adding information because it's a very lengthy application with lots of, uh, areas that we get points for by providing data. So as I have found the data, and I'd say it's ninety-eight percent complete right now. I'm just gonna go through it one more time and make sure all the questions have been answered properly. Uh, and that's, that's really what's key here is that there are so many areas that, that, um, we could trip on. So, like I say, the, and the hundred thousand is in, in case there is an overrun, and we can't tell right now uh, what we're gonna find when they do the test borrowings and, and actually sample those, those cores. Uh, we did cores back in two thousand and one, and I gotta tell you that was clean. There were all the, uh, results from the, the lab were nothing there that we had to worry about. You know, we want to make sure there wasn't anything like lead or, uh, you know, stuff that had been rotting underneath the, uh, surface of the sand. So it was all clean.
And Dick, you already had a destination to send this to, right?
Yes. Yep. We actually have two owned by the same farm. And they're saying equidistant from, uh, the site.
And it's good for farming.
Right.
So since you already went in front of the C P C and they delightfully handed you a hundred thousand bucks, um, we need a motion of the appointing authority to L M C to, uh, allow them to apply to the C P C for a hundred thousand dollar grant. Would anyone like to make that motion?
I will make that motion.
Second.
Doug Mogul, aye.
Jason Peron, aye.
Dan Gail, aye.
Okay. Next time we'll work on the order of operations, Mr. Granals.
Oh, there's nothing we can do about that because it has to be in this Friday by, uh, eleven fifty-nine. Um, the other, the other thing is somebody has to sign as the owner uh, of the lake, and it, and traditionally Carl has signed when we've had all the other, um, applications for anything going on on the waters.
Yeah, after the, after the board has voted.
Right, right. So somebody needs, somebody from the Town of Southwick has to sign, and it says on the grant application, it says C A O.
Well, then we will, I will make a mo, I request a motion for the C A O to sign, depending on when that thing hits us. Depends whose name's gonna be on that document, Mr. Granal.
Actually, we'll be going out, uh, probably Thursday I will do it.
All right. Well, let's leave it as C A O.
We'll make that motion to approve the C A O to sign.
Thank you.
Second.
Doug Mogul, aye.
Jason Peron, aye.
Dan Gail, aye. And, and just to make note, it still would have to go to town meeting to approve the funds.
Oh, of course.
Oh, yeah. This, this will be a warrant article submitted by Sabrina along with all the other ones from.
Right.
E P C.
And as it says, contingent on, uh, getting the grant.
Yes. And this, that vote was for the grant application. Needs, you know, it has to say that, uh, Carl is representing the owner of the lake.
Okay. Carl's been here a while, but not since the lake, the lake was a little bit ahead of Carl.
Fourteen thousand years ago. Age well.
Moving on. Thank you, Mr. Granals. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
You got something for her?
Go ahead.
Oh, no, please. We're on to new business. I'm at the end of that. So I was gonna go around for new business. Why don't you go first?
Since she was here, um, the letter we received from Nancy H. Drury. I had a chance to review all those documents. I don't know if anybody else did. Um, I think that we should bring that to an agenda and invite the parties in for some informal discussion on what's gone on there, what's happening, what can happen, see if we can bring people together on that.
You want to do that in a select board meeting, or do you want to do that outside of a select board meeting?
Uh, whatever you think is best based on your experience. New to me.
I think, I think if they can't come to a, a reasonable agreement, then they, the process for her to appeal the decision of the Conservation Commission under the L P P is in front of this board as the arbiter of that. So.
Do, so do we want to send it? Are you saying we should send it back to them to see if they can?
I'd love for them to resolve it on their own based on what I've heard, but I don't, that's in their purview. And if then if Ms. Drury decides to appeal, then it would come back to this board to be heard. But given that voting season and doc season is coming.
She's gonna want to put her.
We should probably want to move that along. Any objection? We're asking you to have a meeting either in a, in a meeting or with the, yourself and the chair and Ms. Drury to see if that situation can be resolved amicably, short of a formal appeal to, she requested an appeal of the Concom decision under the L P P to this board. And then we talked to her briefly after a select board meeting, and, um, it seems like there's either some miscommunication or, or bad information on all sides. So.
So we would want you to look at it again and give the commission and see if there is a way to accommodate her or not. And if they're not satisfied, she would have to come back to us and we would have to hold some kind of hearing. Okay, I can ask the chair?
Please.
Okay. That's all I had under new.
Well, that was easy. Great.
Cause she's got the work, yeah. She's gotta take it back. Thank you for hanging on a minute.
Carl, new business?
Uh, let's see. I went by the, um, early voting this weekend at town hall, and I visited our dedicated staff who were, um, working the polls and, um, and I think I had Jess give us the updated numbers for the last two days.
Yeah.
So I wanted to see you just how many people are actually showing up for, uh, and taking advantage of this opportunity. And while I was down there, I, I did see, uh, along with Jess that Michelle was here, working with her as part of that transition services contract. So that's working off favorably with her assistance in helping Jess along.
Seven thousand six hundred and forty-one, Carl.
Registered voters in the Town of Southwick, sir.
Yeah.
Is this word association where we, we start and end each other's sentences?
I, yes, I too came in on Saturday to see how it was going, and I think they were, they got twenty-some in on one day, and then I think I got the email. It was twenty-some today too as well. So.
Yeah.
Oh, but seven thousand and change, seven thousand six hundred and forty-one registered voters in the Town of South. Other new business, sir?
That's it for me.
Mr. Peron?
None, sir, at this time. I'm more focused on wrapping up the aggregation portion and stuff from the old business, so.
Nadine. Okay. Uh, I got nothing for new business. I have two for high speed. Okay, let's roll through the old business as quickly as we can. Job description, hours and pay rate for C O A. I saw that in our chairman, all right?
Yes. I don't know why I looked on the holder. My apologies, but.
That's okay.
Um, the job description has been updated with the requested changes. Um, their proposal is for incoming to rank me at her current rate. Um, and then we'll stay, we'll reduce to thirty-two hours once the parking rec position is filled, but until the parking rec position is filled, she'll work forty hours.
Cause this is gonna help us. Once we get the okay to do this and have a discussion, I believe, Doug, you are gonna speak, maybe you and me or Nadine with the chairman of the Council on Aging, get this issue resolved, and then we could finish, um, working out the details for the park and rec based upon the meeting you had with them, and then finalize that job description and get that posted.
As I communicated to the Park and Rec and their meeting last week.
So.
It will go down to thirty-two?
Yes.
No, the hours, so we're currently forty. Currently forty, we're going down to thirty-two hours. Thirty-two, yeah, okay.
Right. We, Diane, we need to have this in place to cover that gap and provide that support to that other board that Doug had met with from, uh, Park and Rec.
So what were the changes in this document from the previous there, Nadine?
Just a lot of cleanup and Diane's changes and you can, you can have time to review it and.
We'll pair this for next week to vote it, to vote on it then? Okay, great.
We have a new calendar, do you want to split the screen?
Yes, I saw that. Our next meeting, well.
So we'll vote on that on three, four.
Three, four.
Three, four.
Okay. Police Chief Internal Recruitment Process, Announce Candidates. So we did receive two applications for the position of Police Chief in the Town of Southwick, and they are Lieutenant Rhett Banish and Sergeant Thomas Crocker. So now it is up to the board to determine the next timeline steps. And I would imagine that at our next meeting on March the fourth, we will set the dates or date for interviews. Any objection?
None on my side.
Thank you.
Fine with me.
Hearing none. Board evaluations and appointed progress.
Um, I said last week there were questions in there. Um, there were questions to me, which I answered most of. I just have to, I sent something to Nadine to see if she could do the fillable form. Then we'll just do a Word doc and download it and figure something else out. I can do it. I can do it tomorrow.
Fillable form in like something on the town webpage or?
Yeah. I'm gonna try to.
I can show you how to do, I do.
Okay.
And I believe I can, without breaking any laws, I believe I can show you how to do that.
Okay, we can set something up on that.
Yep.
And then I actually, um, Jess was gonna talk to Michelle about a consolidated report of all boards and commissions that I could then just put links on, because right now it's very onerous. If you want to go look and see what they all do or what's available, it's click through each one. People get bored. I want to make it easy, a consolidated report. If I can't do that, if I can't do that, I'll just have to do a static report with a link to the report, and then we'll have to change it. Unless I can tie.
The software they got is pretty good. It should be able to do what you want to do.
She was gonna check with Michelle on that and get back to me. Uh, once those two things are set, I, I don't think you guys had anything else.
Mm-mm.
Um, I can tidy up the table of contents, and then do I have your approval to publish issue?
Issue should be on the website. We can avoid paper.
Put it on the website.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
And then, um, I just wanna just, maybe I can tie this off with, uh, Joanne's earlier request tonight, as I will reach out to Jess to see if we can add that to the.
At least the fair person's email address.
Correct. On the, on each webpage, but also under the, if they have a town email address, to have those on the, um.
It used to be in there.
I can't talk to you, but.
My sister just, prior to this meeting, asked for all of ours. And I was, I was under the impression like, I believe when I first very started, we, they were there, and then we did some sort of update.
Yeah, they can only be the town issued emails, not people's private emails.
Right, right, right. Absolutely, absolutely. Yes, that's what we were talking about.
And then lastly, as in a, as just a, a final piece to that, when you do go to the site and to each a board or commission, some of this information is not in here. I want to be able to fill in whether it's by election, whether it's appointed or whether it's a statutory thing.
Mm-hmm.
And then have those boards and commissions fill in their description, whatever their charter is, whatever their reason for being is. And if it's okay with you, I will contact those that are missing and ask them to fill some info in and submit it to, um, the clerk. Is that okay?
Oh, yeah.
Good. And then we'll be pretty clean.
Yep. I thought we had a book. I know I have it.
You have a book?
I do. I have a book of, they did significant research on the statutory basis for every single board and commission.
If you can find that.
Right. Ben, Ben Coyle helped. Ben Coyle, I think Michelle and Doug had the copies.
Yes.
That'd be great.
Doug, it was you and Michelle that had those versions.
If you remember, we might have had some questions on the appointment terms of certain positions, so we conducted some extensive legal research. Hence why I stumbled over the, the ag com. Remember, we had that drawn out forever. We were waiting to find out whether we were compliant with Mass General Law or not.
So if you can find that and then teach me how to do the fillable form.
Yep.
Wrap it up.
Fantastic. Okay, two updates for the I M A, um. High-speed internet is gonna meet tomorrow night. We're gonna continue debating and discussing the uh, inter-municipal agreement between, uh, Westfield Gas and Electric for, uh, services. We did have a little subgroup that got together and um, put together a bunch of thoughts to discuss at this upcoming public meeting. Well, no decisions obviously were made, but, um, it was a good discussion. As I'm told, I was not there. So I will be as, just as uninformed as everyone else that shows up at that meeting tomorrow night, um, on the agenda. And then I did ask Carl, which I saw that he did, sent along in our folders tonight for everyone here, copies of the ARPA money allocations. And I also asked Carl to contact this, the attorney to start the rest of the paperwork necessary for us to complete the formation of the municipal light plant. Cause that will enable us to set up the governance of same, which I assume, which is probably silly of me to assume anything, but that this would act as the M L P on, for at least the foreseeable future, but then it would then establish its budget under, there was a public comment at the end of the meeting last week in the text. And it was, it was a good question about, hey, where's the money? So the ARPA money shows the fifteen thousand. So the ARPA money shows the fifteen thousand allocation, the nine hundred thousand dollar allocation, obviously we have not bonded any of the money and we haven't exhausted, we have not even exhausted the fifteen thousand dollars yet.
We're getting close on that, Doug. We're close on the fifteen.
Correct.
So the poll licenses, the bonds, the community fees and things like that, so we'll be liquidating that earlier allocation for that earlier federal fiscal year and then moving over to the nine hundred number and then applying bills against that.
Correct. But it was a good question because, you know, we, there's a lot of numbers flying around with that entire program and it's very expensive and large, but we, we haven't encumbered anything yet because there's votes that need to be taken and contracts that need to be executed and, and everything else, so.
Yeah, I mean, I, I wanted to make sure that all of those ARPA reports were all updated. So Laura updated all the, the spreadsheets and what the boards had voted on at different times to support different pieces of equipment, budget items, paving, all sorts of things that came out of those dollars so that my successor in the current governing board can see exactly where everything is.
Oh, right. Okay. Well, once again, I'm failing to conclude a meeting on time.
I didn't know I had a time.
Don't believe me, I was told when I got here. Marijuana dispensary webpage posting HSA process and template RFI evaluation and scoring. I did review the information that was, I think the word was umpteen.
Umpteen.
Umpteen, that was in here. So, yeah, it was umpteen.
And I note, I note in your folder, you got a sixth name that's interested in an opportunity for a dispensary.
And that's not the same as the fifth?
No.
Okay.
No.
Great.
No, but this person was interested in one of the earlier, the other one, you know, the, the grow operation down on College Highway.
I like the idea of, I did, I read, I like the idea of a rubric. I, I thought it was a good idea, if that's the right word, that's what I use in when I call, when I do these kinds of evaluations.
Yep.
And I think it also mitigates, if you will, the scoring bias.
Yeah.
So in other words, if you're a tough grader and I'm an easy grader, but you put them all together and average them out, it works out.
Yep, yep. And these were the, you know, the main categories. I referenced where they were on the previous thing I gave you of the criteria for what they would have to submit. And then an example of how it would score out and then we determine, you know, what's an accept, you know, if it's above acceptable and then the kicker would be probably if they're the, what I say the tiebreaker was the disadvantaged.
Yep.
Applicants.
Social equity applicants.
Yeah, those.
Equity applicants. So what's next? Now we, what, what would be your proposal for our next step, Mrs. Gell?
If this is good, I, I didn't run this by Ben Coyle, if you want me to, I can, but I mean, it's pretty much what he gave me and I just formed it to what I already gave you guys. If you are in agreement with that, I can clean this up to post this because we have to post what our value system's going to be.
Jason?
As soon as we can get this approved and up, I want that, that's what I want.
Well, then you need.
Are you approving that then, based on what she's presented?
Yeah, I was going to say, everything Diane has presented is, is very well thought out and, and like you said, the rubric, the scoring ranges, it narrows everything down, takes some of the subjectivity out of it. I would, yeah, I definitely would like to move this forward and to get this up there. So.
I'm sorry, Jason, we still had to decide if we were going to fee the applications.
That's a good one, I hadn't thought too much about that. What do you think?
We had varying fees from all over.
We need town council to review some of this stuff and the next part of the information that we're going to have to put up there, I am going to need, I'm probably not going to be able to do it, it's above my pay grade and my knowledge level. I think we're going to have to pay the attorneys to do the next parts.
So, but there has to be a.
What has to be posted in the process.
Correct, and that's, you know, that's just goes along with it, but I think, do you think that there needs to be, the reason I hesitate on the fee is because then there has to be a process under the law to waive fee. Right?
And that's where, that's on the application, we can waive it for those social equity applicants or reduce it, but I think in, in what I have read, we're still going to have to do some evaluations or maybe, you know, consult outside.
I agree.
On that. And then it's at our cost to allow them to go forward.
So what do you think is a reasonable fee to cover that cost?
Well, I threw in the seven fifty based on what others have done, I mean, we can make it five hundred and see where, we can always change it, we can increase it as we get through our, you know, if somebody, we've got two.
We've got six, right?
If somebody goes on or. Oh, each applicant, you're right, each applicant.
I'm assuming it'd be cheaper if we were in bulk. And it would be to, if you did them serially, so.
Well, we're going to do it as an RFI, right?
Yep.
We, we agree with that?
Yep.
So we're going to get them all at once.
Correct. That's why I think it would be, if you didn't, it would probably have to be more because then the lawyer would have to do it.
Correct.
Do it again, do it again, if you, if you have a six of them, you lay them out and you get the bulk discount if you will.
Correct.
Okay.
Being that it's unknown what it may cost us to review all of these and send them out, I, I would charge something.
I don't think you're up, even you've seen other communities have been in that seven hundred fifty dollar range.
They've been higher, a thousand, twelve hundred. Or I think what I said is, as low as somebody else was three, five.
In the grand scheme.
So I kind of, in the middle.
I'm okay. Jason?
I'm okay with a, an application fee of seven fifty, that works for me.
All right.
There you go. Don't worry, you want to look at some dates here? Or, because we're.
Well, I have to let Ben Coyle, so what I would do before we put this out there is I will give him the entire package, what I'm going to update and then the next step that I said is above my pay grade.
Mm-hmm.
And ask him if he's, if he can have somebody do that.
Mm-hmm.
Can I post this without the next steps? I, I have to refresh myself on what that is.
Okay.
And then.
So we'll carry this to next week and hopefully we'll be in a better position to keep moving.
To, to put our RFI out.
Okay.
Then, okay, great, thank you.
I'm going to skip the hunting bylaw for this week, we'll get to that next week. Review of land license for American Legion. I did attend the land, no land, I did attend the Legion meeting last week, a great bunch of people. And we have an agreement on, within the constraints that we had previously discussed with the Legion, I just have to have the attorney now put it to paper and we are just, we have to go to town meeting for the article anyway, so we've got, now we've got a bunch of runway to get this done.
Right, and you know, the town attorney's already been sent the information for the, the hunting bylaw as well as the American, let's see, the, the land license for the Legion, so those have already gone to the attorney to, and been assigned.
Right, but I would like to have a, before we go and issue a bylaw or even put a, a bylaw in front of the attorney for town meeting, I would like to have a public forum and to get some opinion because I, everyone, there's people all over the map on this, that, you know, from the police to, people have called me, they've called others, I'd like to have a kind of a public forum and kind of a listening session on this. This is not, I think it's straightforward, but I want to get more input on this because I, I'm not the right guy to make hunting bylaws. And I think there's plenty of people out there that are hunters that are going to have a very strong opinion on this, there's going to be landowners that have a very strong opinion on this, and so I think we want to make sure we get it right.
That's fine, when the draft bylaw comes back, you hold a public hearing and you don't put it on a warrant till you vet that out with all the stakeholders.
Exactly. And then, and like I said, and the other thing, the agreement, there's no sense putting an agreement together with the Legion legally until we have approval from town meeting to do so. So I want, I didn't want to get out in front of it, but there, we're all in an agreement in principle, subject to town meeting approval. But there you go. Any update from Master General Law Chapter sixty-one?
Silence.
Okay. TA recruitment panel meetings and job description review, well, we don't need to review the job description. We did have our meeting last week and we are meeting again in March.
Yeah.
I forgot the date.
We set three dates.
Yeah, I forgot the dates, but it's setting us to eighteenth, nineteenth, that week, week of the eighteenth on two dates, right?
That you will be interviewing?
We will be interviewing in exact session for potential candidates.
I think, I think it's nineteenth.
Yeah, oh, the week of the eighteenth? It could be. I should be back.
I have it on my calendar.
That's okay. It's all good.
You have three dates for interviews?
It's either going to be two really long days or three medium long days.
We'll only schedule a third date, just.
Yeah, just in case.
In case.
That's for your side, the, the committee?
The screening committee, yeah. And is that, MRI is setting those up, right, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Yes.
And much appreciated.
Just wanted to make sure because I'm going to be gone.
Getting into that meeting.
I think it was.
Yeah, no, those candidates won't, you won't be interviewing them, you'll be seeing them probably in April in a public session.
Correct. Very good. T-Mobile hometown grant?
I have requested to be officially put on the Park and Rec's next agenda. I've started to, without, you know, just put, fill out the basic information for the grant application. I'm still waiting to hear, I have not heard back from Carol whether Ms. Reed has any other projects that they're interested in. As soon as I know that for sure, I will finish putting the grant package together with the Park and Rec interim director and try and get that out.
Great. Can we carry the town clerk meeting, town clerk internal job description for our next meeting, Carrie? Do we have that description ready to go? We have it, can we put it back?
Yeah, you have it, you have it.
Yep, let's get it on and.
Yeah, and Nadine's have it.
And we'll discuss it next week and start posting.
Right, and we have a, Nadine's got a recommended range, too.
And we did, you guys have a copy in your file as we discussed during our previous meeting, last meeting. I don't know why it wasn't an email, but it was a formal letter to the planning board regarding the master plan implementation subcommittee regarding the formation of same and the appointing authority. We await the return volume. Other old business, let's signal.
Yeah.
Miss Gell?
We were going to talk about budget items, but that wasn't on the agenda today, are we?
Well, you, I mean, when you're going through the town budget hearings, you can go through.
I thought for us.
Right, you can go through those issues for your own board, Diane, or you can wait till you go through and see what everybody else is looking at. I know the issues that you had talked about last time, I've asked Laura and Jim to get an updated number for the webpage upgrade and this is something Jason had, had discussed last year, the possibility of that. So we're pursuing that to get some quote estimates for the board because it seems like every time we turn around, there's certain features that ours may not have with either surveys or, or other types of more modernized uses, so we're going to try to get something that's a little bit more robust, but let's see what the dollar numbers come out looking like.
Okay, so just a question. Does that sort of, does the software, does that come from us? Who does it come from? I mean, who would put that forward as?
That would be in this, it's in, it would actually be under probably Laura's budget because it's in the computer and IT budget, I would assume, the webpage and.
Oh, yeah, yeah, it'll get assigned somewhere, somewhere like that, Diane. The important thing is, it's an, it's an item that you as a board have considered to be important and you'd like to have some research and have your option of looking at the values as well as the scope. And then there's some other technological issues that come with these things that Doug is familiar with some of the, the wording of the lexicon of drupial or, you know, all of those other types of terms that.
I'm not even going to ask.
Make sure that we're up to date and when I saw that some of these webpage companies were looking at doing that upgrading for those types of issues like that, this serves as a reminder for us to see what else is out there because you've been doing a lot of research on the marijuana and some of these other things and that's brought you to many other communities' webpages.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
So you're seeing, you're, you're seeing some really good examples of other things that you might want to see put in the design of ours, it's just a matter of figuring out what, what those items are and what the price point would be.
Okay, so this may be late to the game, but I would.
It's not town meeting.
I would like to see some kind of enterprise-wide document sharing or repository or project management system that is available to department heads. If somebody applies for a, a business license, that it is available, there's, there's, if I'm interested, I can put in a notification or EDC would be a good one, would want to know if there's a new business license, they would want a notification, oop, somebody just put in a new business license. Planning board might want to know that. If someone applies for special permit, they might want to know. DPUW might want to know and have some kind of notification for the things you're interested in keeping up on as soon as that happens.
That's fine, we can, all of, that listing of.
Process.
That listing of items you just made, if you send it to Laura, Jim and I in an email, we can make sure that when he's getting budgetary estimates from these companies, that we can make sure that that would be something that they could accommodate for in their estimate.
And I don't know a lot about those, but SharePoint might be, you know, an easily accessible one with a low cloud subscription thing. You might know more on those. You're nodding.
I am, I, 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 I think it's an excellent idea, I think the, I think the time to do it is, it's a, it's a huge project.
I know that.
It's a town-wide project.
The other one maybe, the other big project?
Anything else that's in flux, I think that there's, you, you have to look at that in context. It probably would be a good idea probably to see that a little bit and in order to be able to fund it fully in a, in an outlying year, i.e. next year.
Yeah.
And then, because I think, you know, one of the things that I would like to have a greater discussion on, but the timing is not correct at this time, is, you know, I know Board of Health's talking about e-permitting, building inspectors doing e-permitting, other boards and commissions are doing e-permitting and e-filing, we have to get more cohesive about how we're doing that.
Yeah, there's a lot.
Right? So these guys have a quarrel, these guys have a quarrel.
That's what I mean, none of them talk to each other.
Correct. And I think that that's kind of a greater, you know, that's got to be from frankly, at the CAO level, looking down at that from how you're going to manage the organization and implementing that type of thing needs a lot of buy-in.
Yeah.
And process review, so hence why I'm saying the timing of this is interesting, but I, I don't disagree that it's sorely needed as other departments have started to take on this, has done great work with the e-permitting and, and, and stuff like that, but I think we need to see how it all can connect together.
Which was going on my goals and objectives, but.
Absolutely, no, and as it should.
But it's a big thing to, to move forward, I guess, and at least look at it and quantify it. Okay.
Anything else?
No, that's it, I'm.
Anything else you want to budget for? I'm serious.
She's got time. Diane, you have time when you're going through the budget process.
Okay.
So under old business, I just wanted to mention, I did talk to Jess about the town clerk office would be opening up on Friday's effective March eighth, she just wanted to get through the March fifth primary.
Yep.
And then Jason, Colonial's waiting to hear from us about maybe taking a vote next week to do the, to finalize that RFP release and to have it at least submitted to the DPU for review.
Yep.
So if you could check those emails and get back to them and then we can determine what that would look like in the form of a vote or, or an authorization for the next meeting.
Can you some, do me a favor, Carl? Sometimes the, the problem I have is with Mark is that they are all connected and they don't pop up fresh for me. Fresh for me.
Yep. And just. Those came from, um, Denise Allen, so I'll send you.
Where's the?
I'll send them to you, Jason.
I might have already looked at those. Oh, wait.
I think, is that the, well, he's looking for that. Is that the same gentleman from, that was in front of us or is this a different applicant?
No, it's the same gentleman.
Spelled not at all like it sounds, right?
Okay. Oh, can we jump back to that?
I was gonna get to it when it got to be my turn.
I'm all set.
Just gonna go back to it.
Me too. Me too. Under the board of commission handbook, now we know what to do.
Bye. I think we have to carry it on as an agenda item.
Yes. Well, who's gotta do his application?
Well. He could just send us an email, right?
Yeah, anyway.
Well, Jason, we're, we're talking while you're looking, so you just interrupt us whenever you got your stuff.
I've got, I, yeah, I, yeah, I got it.
Oh.
I, I got what Carl was looking at, so I'm all set.
Okay, so. All right, Carl, any other new business or old business? Sorry.
Uh, no, that, that's it, sir.
Okay, so Mr. Kubey, I, I think it's a great idea. I think we should carry, he should send us a letter. An email, a simple email to.
To all three of you?
Nah, just send it to me. This way we don't have to all figure out who's gonna reply to the gentleman. We'll get him on the next agenda for three, four. And I believe we can make an appointment through the, when, he's filling a vacancy, right? So it would be until June thirtieth. Uh, that's my opinion. I'm looking for nodding of head over here.
It would be, and whatever, um.
Negative.
Was, I don't know if he was a two, three or.
Uh, I think it would be till June thirtieth. I think that's our normal MO. He would then be reappointed. To serve the rest of his term. Would he fill the term?
Of the person he's replacing.
So, yeah, but yeah, yeah, you're right. It would be like a two-year deal, cause it was normally a great, yes, okay.
So when you say you're adding him, are you, you're not gonna go through a whole other interview process? You're just gonna put it on as an action vote with the names?
Uh, yes, it, at the, at the request of the chair.
That's fine. I just wanna make sure we're not expecting to do a whole other agenda appointment with interviews.
No. Uh, I am but one member. You guys okay with that?
I'm remembering with you.
Okay.
Oh, absolutely. Yes, yes.
Um, okay.
Okay. So Lisa and I will make sure that goes on the agenda.
And we did, we will go and, uh, is Joanne still here? We will look into that email thing, but I did tip off that it's. First initial, last name at southwickma.gov and we'll try to get that added to the. The list and also on the webpages for the boards and commissions for those that have a town email address. Uh. And I talked about the high-speed internet, so I'm all set. We are gonna go in executive session?
Yep.
Okay, anything out, any other business before we move into executive session?
No, sir, Mr. Chairman. I'm good.
Hearing none. I'll entertain a motion to go into executive session pursuant to Mass General Law, Chapter thirty-eight, Section twenty-one. Two and three and Chapter two fourteen, Section one B, Labor Council Litigation Matters. And Strategy for Collective Bargaining with Police Union Coalition Fire, IAFF, DPW. Non-union staff and clerk union UPSU interim CAO designate. Uh, executive session. Mass General Law, Chapter thirty-eight, Section twenty-one, two and three and Chapter two fourteen, Section one B, and exception number two, it's safe. Go into executive session to conduct collective bargaining sessions with non-union personnel and not reconvene an open session. Move to go into executive session to conduct contract negotiations with non-union personnel and not reconvene an open session. The chair has declared that an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining position of the body and not reconvene an open session. And go into executive session, discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining chair, move to go into executive session. To conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel and not reconvene an open session. Go into executive session, discuss strategy with respect to litigation. And the chair declare that an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on litigating position of the body and not reconvene an open session. And per Chapter two fourteen, Section one B. A person shall have a right against unreasonable substantial or serious interference with their privacy. The Superior Court shall have jurisdiction and equity to enforce such right and in connection therewith to award damages. Lisa, don't end the meeting. Uh, mo-, uh, roll call vote. Doug Moglen, aye.
Jason Prun, aye.
Agila.
Thank you all.